I call to order the special meeting with finances for the Abogado School Board come to order. Will we all stand for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Roll call of officers. Mr. Mangold. Mr. Mike Dunham.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
And Mrs. Bojer.
Here.
Mr. Terulsky.
Here.
Mrs. Huber.
Here.
Mr. Paul Dunham.
Here.
Mr. Pluninska.
Here.
Mrs. Price. Here. Thank you. Public forum. Is there anybody for public forum today? Welcome. Please state your name and address and the floor is yours for five minutes.
Yes, my name is Shane Dooley. I live at 561 Madison Drive, Smithfield, PA. As a concerned parent and taxpayer of this district, I would like to know how the district plans to find the roof project at Smithfield. Just several months ago, this very district did not have enough money for a new teacher's contract and several positions were cut as a class statement. Since the teacher's contract has been ratified, several of those positions have been slowly brought back to the district. Has the district received any windfall money? And also, the actions of this board last month in handling the filing of the vacant two-year position is unfair. There were a couple names mentioned for that position, but several board members took it upon themselves to nominate somebody. You guys have not listened to the voters. You took it upon yourselves to nominate somebody. And as a concerned citizen, I think the people of this district need a petition with the state for a state's review of the district. And also, in recent light, some information came out, a letter that came out, saying that there is blatant disregard for school code and oath of office. Perhaps a petition should be made to the State Ethics Commission to investigate this action also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Just forgot on your microphone. I'd hardly heard anything be said. Is that microphone working?
Well, let's check it, Chris.
Well, somebody had a... I mean, what is... They're not moving close enough to the microphone. God, I'm just telling you.
I'll move close enough to the microphone. Maybe get things checked.
I never heard a thing the guy says. That's...
Anybody else who wants to speak?
Sure.
Any other speakers? Secretarial, do we need to enter into executive session, Mr. Penning?
I am present. There is a need for executive session. But our solicitor is not present yet. So we can come back to go into executive session once the session arrives. We can go into executive session if Mr. Price comes and gets here. We can just call him and just go right into executive session with him. There he is. The reason for executive session is personnel. And I believe that's it. The question out.
Another motion. Motion. On favor? Need a motion to go back into the regular meeting?
To move.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's adopt our agenda as presented.
To move.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda adopted as presented. Approved minutes of the reorganization and revised regular meetings held on December 4, 2019 as presented. Motion?
To move.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Financial. Okay. Need to grant submission to pay the invoice for K-2 Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $1,000 for project management services through Capital Projects. So I have motion.
To move.
Is there any discussion on that? Or last?
Question on the move. Fitz, how much do we have in Capital Projects?
Our current balance is about $60,000.
I have a different question. I asked for the invoice and it stated for November 15, 2019, that it very generically has project management services, $1,000. And presumably that's for... Is that stuck with Smithfield? Is that what this is?
Did you ever copy the invoice then?
I have probably the invoice, it's very generic. And do we have a contract with K-2 Engineering? Is it something that... Then as a board, we did discuss having K-2 Engineering doing specific work with respect to Smithville Elementary. So I just want to be sure what we're... What does the board...
Let me check into it.
I believe my conversation with Janine Minucci, that was for the services that were provided to add the administration building for the sewage project.
I would just ask for a more detailed invoice than what we... We obviously didn't realize services didn't come, so it worked. But do we have any contractors K-2 Engineering?
You had a contract with them for the sewage installations that went on around here. And I do know that they... She was still doing work. Janine Minucci was out trying to get the contractors for the sewage at the high school, plus DeFur, to tie everything up, give the plus list. There were some things that were not... They had to have the one contractor come out multiple times to reseed, to get grass to grow and things of that nature. So this just might be the final payment for managing those projects. But before I watch on here, I might get a little bit of a chat.
Should we hold on that motion until we get further confirmation on it?
Mr. Penning.
The motion's been... Oh, Janine, mark it.
Oh, that's the sewage treatment plan. Our original... That's in addition to our original proposal. The original proposal just encompassed DeFur and the administration building. And then after the fact, Bill Cheswell asked us to do the... No, it encompassed the high school, the administration building. After the... No, the high school and DeFur. After the fact, Mr. Cheswell asked us to do the administration building and the grease trap in the kitchen. So we had to hire an engineer, a funding engineer, to do the grease trap. So that's the grease trap in the admin building that we just got. It wasn't in our...
Will we need to continue to authorize payment for that vote A?
Do we have the motion?
To move.
You already got a motion.
We have one.
You're on, I touched you.
Oh, okay, we... Do you understand? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Authorize administration to make available the 2020, 2021 Act One proposed preliminary budget available for public inspection on or before December 27, 2019, and give public notice on or before January 6, 2020, of intent to adopt the Act One preliminary budget. Motion?
To move.
Or any discussion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any correspondence? Solicitor's report?
No report, not at present.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to personnel. Need a motion to award Anita Olisch the 4.5-hour cafeteria position at George J. Flava Elementary according to contract.
To move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant James Landman custodian in FMLA commencing on December 23, 2019 for work... For 60 workdays as permitted by the FMLA guidelines.
To move.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accept the resignation of Ryan Grim, Integrated Technology Specialist effective February 11, 2020. Motion?
To move.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, do you have a plan?
Yeah, till...
Till February 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administrative. Authorize California University School Counseling Graduate Program student Caitlin Antel an elementary internship placement for January 21, 2020 through May 8, 2020 with Kristen Crawford, school counselor. Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to add the following substitute pending all proper documents. Could be a professional, Charles Stewart.
To move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Maintenance. Discussion of Smithfield Elementary Roof Replacement.
Ward, would I have handed out to you at the start of the meeting? I did have a meeting with Mr. Todek, Mr. Chapley from Maintenance, Mr. Belchuk, and Ms. Minucci from K-2 Engineering. Okay? And in that list that I passed out to you, it's what we recommend for potential roof bidders. I know when we talked last month, we had comparing apples and oranges. So with this, it would give the potential companies to give us a apples-to-apples bid on the work at Smithfield Elementary, the roof. Okay? The list, verify building permit requirements with AHJ, repair drawing and specification documents required for a building permit, and ensure all required building code inspections are called for and finalized. Deliver code approval certifications to the owner. Two, completely tear off of existing roof membrane and insulation down to existing steel depth. Replace all roof drains and leaf guards with Zern roof drains are equal. Perform a hose test. Witness by district to be sure all drains are free-flowing before and after installation. Design, provide, and install mechanically attached tapered insulation. Minimum R30 to meet 2015 IPC sloping. A minimum 1/8 inch per foot or as required by manufacturer for warranty. Replace rotten edge blocking as needed and add additional edge blocking as required by taper to design. Edge blocking must be the same thickness as tapered along roof edge. Extend or replace all existing roof equipment curbs and vent stacks as required for insulation taper. Disconnect and reconnect existing equipment as required to flash and address issues with curbs, including electrical, plumbing, and HVAC connections. Coordinate with district facilities personnel. Provide and install a fully adhered black 90-mil EPDM roofing system, including all flashing, termination bars, fasteners, and adhesives for a complete warranted system. A two ply system or TPO will also be acceptable materials for bid. Field of roof uplift pressure 90 pounds per square foot. Provide and install new 40 aluminum edge metal grapple stop along entire roof perimeter. All edge blocking to be completely covered with new metal in standard manufacturer's color selected by the owner. Existing soft materials shall remain. Properly dispose of all demolition and construction debris in an approved landfill. Roof must issue a 30-year NDL warranty. Contractor must apply for and pay prevailing wages for all project labor and submit certified payroll to the district for all workers. With this list, we can get an apples-to-apples pricing and decide what is most important in terms of our budget for the building. The district could also request pricing for 60-mil membrane and a 25-year warranty if we want to save a little bit of money. As this is just a recommendation, as an independent third party, and K-2 Engineering was not hired to perform any work for the district on this project, we are utilizing this as a guideline only. And I do appreciate Janine from K-2 meeting with our maintenance, myself, and Mr. Belchuk to discuss the project for the roof at Smithfield Elementary. And with... With that being said, I feel that, you know, it's important for her to put the roof on. The concerns that we all had was, you know, the amount of leaks that were there and the amount of wet insulation you may have. So Mr. Todek, Mr. Chapley, and I do agree that... I'm sorry, and Mrs. Minucci agree that the best... This would be the best plan for the roof at Smithfield. So if you have questions or if anybody has questions or comments, I did ask Janine Minucci to be here as an independent third party to give us some guidance on what I shared.
I have a comment and a question. With respect number two, and we just saw this tonight, so forgive me if... My first comment is that with respect number two, completely tear off the existing roof membrane. Many Carlisle representatives were fairly confident that that didn't need to have it. And they were still able... I can't remember if it was a 20 or 25-year warranty. But if they're able to give a warranty for 25 years and they're going to warrant that roof without replacing it, completely tearing it off, I should say, is a significant savings. Why would we not explore that option?
Well, when I spoke to, I think it was Jeff and Carlisle last month, the last meeting we were here, that they did tell me that they could give us a price and a proposal on a complete tear off. And that's... I'm not a professional by any means as far as roofing. That's why I did ask K-2 Engineering to come in as an independent third party to give us their recommendation. You know, and that way, with that recommendation, that all companies would have the same expectation to give us their price for that work.
If they were to give us a 25-year warranty and save the district hundreds of thousands of dollars, that just seems to me like the more practical way to go. And then my second question would be, didn't a representative from Fairchild Lumber come out and come up with the roof? So we really aren't exploring by just following this. We haven't explored the option of doing some type of a slightly fishbrow that might be a significant savings as well.
I did speak to Ed Ball in Fairchild Lumber. He was on the roof. And I did let him know that we would be talking this evening and that we would be giving the recommendation for a roof. So I don't know whether that would be similar, if he could give us a proposal on that type of roof. You know, to go with this or not, Janine? Would that be possible?
I'm not sure what you're talking about. Putting metal?
Metal. A metal slope roof.
That's a lot more complicated in the process because you have to make sure all your steel supports the way your construction is going on that roof. So that's not a simple process. That's actually doing an construction project, a roof project. As far as your question about the roof, though, the concern with the roof 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 is that you don't... There's no guarantee that the insulation is flat. Just because you take it from here or from there, that doesn't tell you that the insulation on that whole roof is not flat. So what could happen is you can get a novel for the roof and then as the project starts, run into wet insulation and that has to be replaced because stuff is going to appear to that. And you end up, you know, replacing that as a change.
Wasn't there a discussion, though, that you could do a scan prior to? And that actually, we really wanted to know whether we need to replace everything or not? That scan could be done now to check the moisture? Are you from Carlisle?
I'm from Carlisle, yeah. I was here last year. And again, I appreciate what Janine's saying about this and things you're saying about... That's always, you know, if you want to do that, take everything out and start over. We definitely like to do that also. The reason we came in and I came on the roof to look at your situation is we determined, you know, because of what the school was trying to do, this was a very good alternative to do it. We've done this thousands of squares. Again, I think I spiked it, we just stepped up a lot and came back. Same situation. We would do a roof scan. We would remove any of the wet insulation that was still on the roof scan and replace that. Now, there's always the possibility of, you know, running it bigger. But in the budget number that we provided last few weeks ago, we had a certain amount of 10% that was already built in to that. So that's approximately 335 square. So now that could change. You know, it could be an additional replacement if needed. But again, our contention is that, yeah, this could work fine in the roof. We were also adding insulation on all the perimeters to get the perimeter slope, get the roof slope for the drain. Right now, there's a lot of concrete up there. That is an issue. We want to remove water. We don't want to keep water on the roof. So we were putting 12-foot perimeter of tapered insulation, quarter-inch slope to the roof drain to alleviate, you know, that problem. And we were putting new edge metal. Not the extender, we were just going to change the fascia, build the roof back up to the height we need with new wood and put an existing matching fascia on the roof there. And but again, you people have to make your mind up. Our suggestion, it was a suggestion that we felt that was a very viable suggestion that would work for your school district. But I have a pleasure I could give you these pamphlets I did last time, that I do have a scope of work for total roof replacement too, if you would like that. I could leave these with you. I won't do it for the whole thing. I don't think we're prepared to let you prepare to do that this evening. But I could leave these with you. And but my proposal too was a 20-year roof. It wasn't like 25-year.
Okay.
Question. Last meeting we were here, you told us that here is presently a Carlisle roof on Smithfield and it's been there since 1994. And it has exceeded the original warranty. Is that possible?
Originally, that fact that they put that on is they purchased a 10-year roof.
And you told us since that installation, there have been great strides in the roofing process. So is it reasonable for us to expect to get at least, if not more, from a new Carlisle roof?
We're pressing for a 20-year roof system.
At a fraction of the $800,000?
A fraction or a portion, you know, what some other proposals make, so... And this, again, this is, you know, we propose this building through the CoStar program also. And we could get, you know, one bid, three bids, whatever you would request, we could do that. And that would be, you know, you could look at different options. You want that? Get, you know, get three bidders or three quotes that we can propose that. We could do that for you at the world. Again, Janine's almost disputing what Janine's saying too. She's a professional. She... And, you know, everything's under the tear off. It's just the situation you keep worrying about. That was what we...
Can we have a track record with the type of roof from what is presently on Smithfield?
You can say that, sure.
So what was the point, Dan?
So why don't we, on that two, get the price for the meat there off and then the other, our Carlisle proposals?
Yeah, I think, you know, the point of coming up with that bullet list was that each one of the proposals that you were looking at, you couldn't tell what was included in that price. It was very vague. And you didn't know if you were getting a hold on through that mouth. You know, and you weren't carrying apples down. But if you... Any one of these companies can bid that same thing. So with the CoStar program, you're not publicly advertising, so you're not getting a competitive price. If you just go with one bid from one company. You know, they're getting competitive labor prices. You're not getting a competitive material price. If you use that bullet list, like if you want to get a price for a roof, though, these other guys can give you a price as well. You just need a bullet list so you know all prices in the same thing. So you share the price. It happens.
What you prepared, that could evolve too. You did a nice job this time.
So, you know, you could say we want a 60-mil roof, you know, and a 20-year warranty. Get that same bullet list or you could do a rip over, which I would change it slightly because it does need paper insulation at the edge and it does need, I don't know. See, when you... They have a... Well, two... So, yeah, each one of these companies can bid the same thing. And then you have a little bit of competition in material, not just...
The difference is, of a manufacturer, we will break contractors into it. Don't know where he's a contractor. He provided you a quote in this conflict. So there's... It's a little different. But again, I gave you before, you can see our, you know, a warranty fund of, for instance, $200 million. So we have a track record. Carlisle is a company standing behind what we do. Last thing we wanted to do was have an issue to replace the roof. So I'm convinced. We have a really good track record over the last 60 years.
See, my question is, last time we were given a $200,000 option and an $800,000 option. And I understand that it was an apples tap. But my understanding was that the Carlisle roof, okay, which is presently on Smithfield and has presently exceeded by quite a few years its warranty, would do the job. We're saving, if that's the case, $600,000. Now, I realize it's not apples tap, but I also realize the difference between a $200,000 roofing job that has worked on the building since 1994 can't be all bad.
That was a whole different product. Yeah. Three. Like three. All right. Still significant.
The other thing, you know, if you look at the list of some middle... I think it would be a good idea for you to get a copy. You know, when they give you the price for the roof, they should give you a copy of their product, material, you know, cut sheet. And they should also give you a copy of the warranty. So you can compare the parts.
They have. They have everything.
Absolutely.
They have. They have.
Because I guess it's just, you know, you're on that. And you need to... It just depends on, you know, what kind of money you want. Obviously, you know, a warranty is different than... But obviously, you know, a warranty is different than the quality of the system that's on the roof. You know, just because you have a roof on it, it doesn't mean the roof is not going to leak. You know, and it doesn't mean that it's going to fall.
The warranty is only as good as the company that's.
And Carlisle has, I mean, there was something I just recently shared on social media where Carlisle had just went above and beyond. There was a contractor that installed their product and the contractor went out of business and Carlisle found out about it. They went from placing, they went under contractual occasion. That to me speaks volumes about companies that will go into a school district and guarantee their product even when they're not legally liable or responsible to do so. That, that to me is good business and demonstrates that they're trustworthy company.
I just, I just don't want this to lock us out of considering, okay, what we have as a good track record from the company.
You have, you currently have Garland roofs, the one team you're dealing with, some of those. You currently have roofs that Miller Roofing have come on and put on the kitchen to go for your air holes and school. And when I asked him about that roof, he didn't have the trouble, he was kind of, he was like, that roof was there. So, you know, these companies have track records too. They'll only, you need to be aware with the co-star program, you can negotiate. So the low bidder is not somebody you're suffering. It's my recommendation, get the price from all these people on an apples-to-apples basis and then negotiate with the low bidder. But you need to decide, do you want a roof cover? Do you want a sixty mil, twenty-year warranty, or do you want a ninety mil, thirty? And then ask them if you're ready.
Mr. Wilson, we don't do both ways. Do we not see, see this, to check those?
Yeah, you can, but I did have a question, is it okay to ask? Yeah, I didn't understand, and I think maybe this gets to your answer. Why do you want an approved co-stars vendor? Because, because all of these, I assume, I may be wrong. Carlisle has promptly on co-stars to the state various roofing systems.
It's a system, it's a system, yeah. We have approved contractors that comply our system regardless of what they. So for sure, we're providing, we have, we have a contractor, co-stars, we approve a contractor to give you quotes. The bonus of the co-stars is you can, you can contract, provide, give quotes, provide a roof with contractor base that are the better echelon contractors, to give you the best pricing and give you the best price. So maybe, if you would not go to bid, you know, you have a possibility of someone coming in and just, you know, giving you a low on a number and you kind of get suffering. Well, co-stars is negotiable, so if you like a contractor and they're hired than the next guy, you can sit down and say, listen, hey, we would want you to do this job, can you help us out with anything else?
So.
And you're going to get the right contractor to build the project.
You could go lower than what your co-stars bid is, you can't go high.
It was just a budget price, if we get, I had, I had a contractor come in with me and they provided the budget on the floors. Now, that contractor, if I'm not going to give you our number, if you want two other contractors to report it, three, we could provide that for you. We would, we would recommend that contractor base from our, our application.
Okay, and then again, though, you can provide a roof system that would be an overlay or you can provide one that would be brand-new after you've torn off the roof.
Both of them, yeah.
But that's, that's what I'm getting at, that if you're going to say you only want co-star approved roofing manufacturers, then what you're looking at is that most of them offer both, those possibilities to you.
They, 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 the same contractors that we would recommend can do the overlay or the total tear-off. So the idea is to get both options, like.
Both proposals, for both, that they tear off or a roof over.
I guess not, it's important that there be any significant cost condition to see fit in both ways.
Well, first of all, that, really what you're looking for are RFPs, right?
Well, in that.
As opposed to low bidding.
It's my understanding you signed a purchase order for the product, um, to the co-stars.
You would, no, you would, they would provide you the quote and they would put our co-star license number and vendor number on their quote to you. And then if business is normal, they would, you would give them the purchase order. They would, you would provide them with, you know, the payments, if business is normal. And the only thing is, we need to go back to co-stars with, with some jobs that are, co-stars just like to know the jobs that they did, so they can keep reporting back to the DGM.
Okay, now, that's the Department of General Services, that's the thing. So, but really, we can contact co-stars. They'll give us a list of everybody who's eligible for this kind of project on their vendor-approved list. And administration or whomever can talk to every one of them and select.
You quit, I don't know why you want to do that.
Select you with one? Well, why wouldn't anybody do that?
Yeah. The contractor goes with Carlisle, so it would be a Carlisle applicant, that's what we would do. Okay, there's, we're the only new manufacturer that lives on our country.
No, that's not.
Versicle, yeah, well, Versicle, they, too. They are, they're a sister company that, they're also approved to do that too, but it's, it would be, it's a separate company. So if you would decide to use Carlisle, it would be a Carlisle applicant, or it would be, excuse me, a Versicle applicant. It would do it through co-stars and Versicle. Couldn't do a Versicle and a Carlisle, they're separate.
So, so you're saying if we go through the co-stars, you are the roofing manufacturer presently approved by co-stars?
Correct.
Yeah, that was one of the differences in the bids last week that I was concerned about. Now, Garland, they, they're not in co-stars, but they're a similar program, you can do the same thing in town. But the difference in what you were looking at were, these were budget numbers that they gave you. They haven't bidded through their contractor yet, so that you didn't have the actual job number. And what Miller Roofing was giving you was a contracted price, so it was the number for the job.
Okay, so what you're saying, Ms. Vannucci, when you say must be approved co-star vendor or similar procurement program, you're saying that we would have to limit ourselves to co-stars? We could look at other intergovernmental cooperation programs that exist, of which operating in Pennsylvania is problem twenty.
The only thing you couldn't do is use a roofing manufacturer that's not in one of those programs.
Right.
Because then it would have to be publicly.
Without bidding, publicly with low bids.
Do we want to.
Do you understand what?
Entertain a motion through co-stars or any of these other appropriate?
That, I believe that's what K2 is suggesting, recommending, right?
Have a complete tear-off. It's a complete tear-off for roof overlay.
For over. But she's saying you want to at least, when you look at these vendors, be able to have them all say, well, here's what I would do if I'm doing a tear-off. Tell us that you're going to minimally do this and what else are you going to do to the price or whatever?
Yes.
Is there, fair to, will companies such as the Miller Company in this local, will they still be able, under those requirements they talked about, co-stars, will we still be able to consider theirs? Because that's the goal, right, to get as much, as much interest, particularly local interest?
Yeah, the co-stars program actually, you know, you can get a price from this, in fact, you can get a price from Carlisle, you can get a price from Versicle, you can get a price from Garland, look at all of them. Pick which company you want to work with and then you can negotiate with that company if you want to change something about the project.
Well, for example.
It's not like a public bid where you're locked into it often.
Yeah, where, is Miller a manufacturer or installer?
Installor.
Okay, so as an example, Miller is an approved installer for various roof manufacturers, right?
Yes.
And some of those roof manufacturers are part of co-stars or another intergovernmental cooperation.
Yes.
Jeanine, could you come up with a list similar to this bullet list that would include, this one, item number two says a complete tear-off. Could you come up with an appropriate bullet list that would not include the complete tear-off? So the board could get two separate proposals that would be apples to apples, whether it's list A or list B?
Do you want to keep that listed at a thirty-year warranty? Or do you want to change that to a twenty-year? Maybe if you're going to do a roof cover.
Yeah, get, how about get them both, Jeanine? Get a twenty-year warranty and a thirty-year warranty?
I would rather land, but I don't know if it's possible, do you guys have contract numbers, is there a budget at that point?
I'd have to, I'd have to, um, the contractor, the legal. No detail, no detail.
Is there something that we can do, just might move this process forward in terms of a vote? Because, I mean, everybody has said that if we want to start this project next summer, that we need to start this process soon for it to be competitive.
Yeah, I think, I think K2 would tell you that.
Yeah.
I know a lot of board meetings and other places that are planning summer projects, they're all, they're all saying get the hot there now.
But co-stars also.
We could do this, but we don't have.
We can, we can put her.
We didn't want to.
Since she has, that's one of the.
Did you have, was apples to apples by next meeting?
I can, can I contract for it by next meeting? I can have the apples to apples too this week.
Okay.
Yeah. But I get a lead if I give you your hand.
Yeah, you did that.
Is this something you want to table till next meeting?
Especially one more show, please?
Yeah.
And again, Jeanine's professional, she knows, she understands the project. If you would feel comfortable with Jeanine, we could put Jeanine under our Carlisle contract. She, whatever fees she would charge could be put into our, into our, as the auxiliary, you know, consultancy. Which, I'm not sure what she would charge, but it would be the same thing. She would give you a quote for her services, we would put her, our contractor, her vendor number on it and then she could sit there and oversee the project if you feel comfortable with that. And I don't want to issue that, so. That's something, that, again, that's a good board. It would, it would incur a little bit of dollars, but if you give you a, a, a more of a sense, a piece of mind, I, I think that would open. I mean, we do, we, we said it all along, we want to design professionals, whatever we do with co-stars, that's our first priority. Again, this, when we came into this situation, how we come into it, it was, it seemed like there was this, this whole, the process had to be, try to be as competitive as you can. And that's what we, that's what we've been on. But, but we always offer, we always want to design professionals for sure.
Well, as far as that goes, you know, we're just trying to offer you, I think, this kind of opinion as to what this is going to be. If you're building and getting good value for your money, we want to do this for a long time. We're not trying to get any workout list. But there's a lot of work involved in, on the design part of the public bid, because, you know, it's, you have to have the checkbook and things like that, if you don't get everything on the top. But it's, I feel like that's.
And you could, like, use this kind of this vote.
So, do you, is this something we want, we want a motion for the, for the two proposals? I guess we have a text. How should you word that?
Um, you would require administration to obtain a set of specifications similar to what we presently have. You want a motion to administration to obtain from K2 in a set of specifications for an overlay roof. Again, where the approved bidder with the co-stars vendor were similar procurement program. So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That way you're going to look at oranges to oranges for an overlay and apples to apples for a tear-off.
Grant approval to Fred Peters Auctioneers LLC to conduct an online auction of excess equipment and fixtures to take place on January twenty-second, twenty twenty. Motion.
How much are you paying? I, I don't know.
Is that something we hold off on until?
Wait, in front of you, you've got a. Okay, the auctioneer's fee is a commission of ten percent and a buyer's premium of twelve percent. So you want to do this, administration's recommending you do this pursuant to Fred Peters Auctioneers' proposal letter dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, he's proposing a date of the auction, January twenty-second. Labor, approximately two hundred fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. And then his auctioneer fee would be a commission of ten percent and a buyer's premium of twelve percent, which means the buyer pays the premium with the auctioneer pieces. And advertising is estimated to be four hundred fifty dollars. So that's what we would be paying, four fifty plus up to five hundred for labor to get it going and a ten percent commission.
Is this how they extra, we have, just to gather, like, people in chairs and desks?
Uh, we have some kitchen equipment as well. We have, we have, we have the grant of the vice steamers in some of the kitchens. We have the old ovens, old steamers and some various other equipment throughout the district that we, um, can auction.
Do we hear those or anything like that?
First, Larry, computers?
No.
Part of that, no.
Okay.
Did we get a tentative of, of, of anybody else?
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of, we were just trying to have a touch of that. It's going to happen.
What is the wish of the board?
I'd say we could better request, I think it's kind of, with the, with advertisement, commission. We can get buyers, we can get pictures covered under light, but we have some other.
Would you like to make a motion to begin?
I don't, if we get other auctions.
Bids from other auctioneers?
If you're doing that, it would be a motion to solicit proposals for auctioneer services to dispose of this equipment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So be, be the way it's stated. Fair enough.
Yes.
Okay, I don't believe, be never actually.
No, I don't think we.
Never actually got to die in a second.
Yeah.
So we are, we agree with you. You're going to obtain proposals from auctioneers to conduct an auction for the excess equipment. You're going to obtain proposals from auctioneers to conduct an auction for the excess equipment
Yes.
Vince, is there anything you want, you want to work with this package or is there this information?
We can go over it, or if you have any questions on any information or if you suggest that's the packet I have used in other districts. If there's something that you're used to seeing in budget workshops or have a budget workshop through the process, again, this is a very, very early preliminary budget. So please keep that in mind. We're, we're still working with, trying to have the best estimate for any future financial issues.
This is, I think, gives a package, this is, this is not going to be a solid package. This is great public.
I believe that's all.
Well, this, this, you can be, take a listen, it's trying to be public.
This is a package that...
And actually what would happen is, what would I have to, and I now would prepare for PDE budget, which has to be out there for public. And of course, in fact, my license, it would actually have that in that budget.
Yeah, quick, quick, remember from the public says I'd like to see it. It's on a required PDE format. What he's giving you tonight is, is a summary of where he thinks you presently stand financially with all. So... Do you have any... So this is not what somebody would receive if they asked for the preliminary budget. It would be a different document.
And if you have any questions on any of the information or if you want to talk to more details, please look it up.
My correction, when somebody actually asks for the preliminary budget, it would be different than this?
Yes, it would be the actual PDE document.
But there's nothing in your confidential information.
Does, does the, does the board want this, these documents, are they to be posted along with our board meeting? I can have Mr. Bol and put it on the district webpage. Okay, Mr. Bol, make sure that we get Vince's mark and this packet proposed on our district webpage.
Next regular meeting will be held on January 15, 2020 in the Deepburg Elementary and Swainy School Cafeteria. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to take a moment first and wish all of you a happy holiday season, enjoy Christmas, New Years. Thank you for attending the board meeting.
All in favor?